Okay, I'll call the meeting to order, roll call please.
Hey, today is Tuesday, July 9th, Craig Borba. Juanita Garner is underway, Al Jones.
Here.
David Norgard.
Here.
Deborah Schwartz.
Here.
Right, four are here right now.
Okay, Roman numeral two, acceptance of the agenda, motion please.
Move as presented.
I have a second.
Second.
Thank you. I don't have to do a roll call, I can just say.
We're all, yeah, we can just say all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. And Roger Roman, number three, any public comments? So anybody online that you have public comments?
So, uh, no, they're.
They're all for you.
I'm assuming you're not public comment, right? Bill and Peter, you're just gonna wait for the foundation section?
Right, correct.
Yeah.
All right, so here. Okay, let's move on to number four, consent agenda. Uh, it's been A, B, and C. Any questions or concerns about the consent agenda?
Nope.
I have a motion, please. I have a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay, Roman numeral five, my favorite area, administrative reports. Uh, so, with the friends, we have.
On this one, Schwartz and Jones.
See anybody speaking on behalf of the friends?
Um, yes. The Friends have, one second, trying to, they're silly guys. The Friends of the Library had, had, um, weekly sales on Saturdays in June, and they did very well. I don't remember the exact dollars, but they were very, very happy with their results. And, uh, she's gonna, which side, either side. So they got rid of a lot of books, which was great, and they made some money, the Friends did too, and that's good. And then they are planning some monthly sales, like the end of August. I'm afraid when in July, but they're gonna announce some more upcoming sales. Their, their goal is to, to clear it out, you know, the, the J.C. Frye Building.
Oh, I just sent them back, as I just delivered 230 books.
Oh my god.
Whoa.
Happens all the time, happens all the time, but that's okay, because then we, uh, yeah, yeah, keeps us with some fresh, fresh items to sell, sell, and helps support our programs. So, um, the Friends are on hiatus for a couple of months, and they'll be back, I believe, in September for their regular monthly meetings. But, nothing really, nothing else. They did have a, they, they actually did get a special meeting with the architects, to talk about their book sale space and the J.C. Frye Building, so that was really good.
How did that go?
It actually went fine. It's, uh, we, they were very pleased at the end of the meeting with the results. They all had to come to consensus on some things, and, um, so, but it did, it worked out really well, group, yeah. It was, it was, it was perfect. They needed to have that meeting, so it worked out well.
Thank you, Jeannie, and we have three representatives from the foundation. Who is going to speak first?
So, I, I will speak first, Peter Pearson here, and then after I speak, I'll turn it over to our new board president, Bill Wiley. So, just to let all of you know, we, uh, we start a new fiscal year, and we've elected six new board members to the foundation. So, we now have twenty-three board members, which is wonderful. Not only do we have a good number of board members, but we have great skills and traits, and connections in the community that are gonna be so important as we go forth with more fundraising. Also wanted you to know that we've elected new officers for the foundation. So, most of you are very familiar, most familiar with David Sidley. And David Sidley has been the board president for a number of years. Uh, he has stepped down as president, he's now the immediate past president, and will serve in that capacity on our executive committee for this next year. Uh, our new president is Bill Wiley, who will be giving a portion of our report today. And with Bill is Betsy Smalley, and we wanted to introduce Betsy to you today. Betsy is our vice president of the board this year. She's been on the board before, and she's now become an officer of the board as vice president. Betsy, do you wanna wave your hand or give any acknowledgement there? Great. Um, just wanted to give you a little bit of information about the various types of fundraising that the foundation is engaged in, because this next year, it's gonna be all about fundraising, and basically three different types of fundraising that we're doing. First is, of course, we have a couple of special events planned. Uh, the first of which will happen in October, called Pride on the Page. This will be the third year of Pride on the Page, and our board member Cory Roskin is working very hard on lining up authors for that program, which is gonna take place mostly on Sunday, October 20th, at the Cultural Center. So, we're very pleased about that. We'll have more information about authors and panels and keynote speaker as that date approaches. The second special event that Cory's team is planning is gonna be in April, in conjunction with National Library Week, and that's based on a program we did last year called Brunch on the Page. And this year, it's going to be Cocktails and Ordures on the Page, which will be held at one of our board members' homes. Uh, for those of you that, uh, have, have met Betsy Smalley, she's agreed to host this program in her home next year. And so, we're hoping that we will have an author available in that program. We'll probably have about a hundred and twenty-five people in attendance. And again, it will be a cocktail and hors d'oeuvre reception rather than a sit-down brunch. So, we're excited about having that. So, two special events. In addition, we're gonna be doing two solicitations of individuals this year. We're gonna do a solicitation of individuals in November and December. And then again, we're gonna solicit individuals in March and April for something called National Library Giving Day. And for both of these, we're utilizing the services of a national organization that specializes in library direct mail campaigns called Carl Blumen Associates. And Carl Blumen Associates is gonna help us develop the message. Uh, they will do a layout of the solicitations that are to go out. They'll do all of the creative work for it and do the mailing for us. So, we're excited about doing that. In addition to sending out to our current donors, Carl Blum is also gonna do what's called an acquisition campaign. And we're gonna be mailing solicitations to about seven thousand households throughout the valley who've never given to us before, in hopes that we can bring in some new donors to the foundation this next year. So, that's gonna happen in November and December. We're gonna ask our board members to write personal notes on letters that are gonna go out to our current donors. And then we'll do a second solicitation of individuals, like I said, in April, in conjunction with Library Giving Day. So then on top of those two fundraising efforts, as you know, we have also taken on a capital campaign fundraising effort of a million dollars, which would be matched by the trustees' million dollars to pay for the enhancements to the children's area and the community room in the renovation. I want you to know that we have, uh, asked Ed McBride and Jeffrey Norman to be co-chairs of the steering committee for that capital campaign. They have jumped in with both feet, they're very enthusiastic. We've had several meetings of the steering committee, and we've now identified eight or ten individuals who we're, uh, asking to be part of an honorary committee for our capital campaign. And we'll share those names with you at a later date, once we have them all confirmed, but they're names that are gonna be very familiar to all of you, and names that are gonna open a lot of doors for us in this campaign. So, fundraising, 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 and more fundraising is really what's gonna happen at the foundation this next year. The Capital Campaign Steering Committee is also working with a consultant, Hannah Berger, out of Los Angeles, who's helping us to develop what's called a case statement for this campaign. It will be a document that we give to people individually as we're making solicitations over the next year. And the donors will keep this booklet. It will help explain exactly what this one and two million dollar campaign is going to be. And, uh, we are confident that we're gonna hit that million dollar mark probably by next spring, before we launch a more public campaign to ask people to make smaller donations to help get us to our million dollars. And I am gonna stop my report there, and I'm gonna turn it over to our new board president, Bill Wiley. And when I turn it over to Bill, I'm gonna leave the meeting, because he's gonna gossip about me in the next few minutes, and I think it's probably most appropriate for me not to be a part of the meeting at this point. But, uh, if you have any questions before I turn it over to Bill, happy to answer those for you right now. And anything that you'd like me to elaborate on that I've just spoken about?
All right, thank you, Peter. Questions from trustees? Yes.
Uh, could you, uh, add any further detail about the direct mail solicitation? You mentioned, uh, a number of seven thousand. Uh, is there some segmentation to that, or you're just, wha- what's, can you describe that a little bit more?
Sure will. So, this, this company, Carl Blumen Associates, who are specialists in library direct mail campaigns, they have demographic information about the type of households that are most likely to give to, to uh, public library fundraising efforts. So, they're gonna sift through the data of people that live in the valley and pull out those households that they believe are most likely to give based on their demographic information. They will send the mailing for us, so we don't own that mailing list. They send the mailing out on our behalf. And then when people respond and send a donation back to us, then we will own that donor information forever. And we can then approach those donors in future years at no cost, obviously.
Thanks.
What's the cost for you at this time?
So, the two campaigns together, with all the printing and all the mailing, is gonna cost the foundation twenty thousand dollars. And last year, our solicitation, our individual solicitation brought in thirty-one thousand dollars. We're anticipating that it's probably gonna bring in over fifty thousand dollars this year with the acquisition campaign.
Any other questions, trustees? All right, thank you so much for that presentation. Bill, you're on.
Thank you.
Good, good evening.
Good night, Peter.
Good night.
Peter. Uh, I wanted to give, uh, the, uh, uh, input, I'm scared, uh, excuse me, the update on the, um, selection of our executive director. Uh, because you were so generous to fund, uh, several years of the salary for that person. And the executive committee, uh, met, and, uh, we did look over several, uh, resumes and, uh, entertained options from other people, but, uh, we decided to, uh, go with Peter Pearson. And, um, uh, Peter stepped away because he wants everything to be transparent, and if there are questions, um, you wanted you, you to be able to ask those without his presence, but, um, yeah, I think, I think you recall that, um, we had very positive, uh, thoughts about, about Peter Pearson, and he had helped us develop our strategy, and he's really done a great job with, uh, the five or six committees, standing committees that we have on the board. We were concerned that he being remote, uh, might be a disadvantage to us when we started to, uh, go out, uh, in earnest to, uh, solicit donations, because he lacked, uh, local knowledge. But a couple of things have happened since then, and one of them is the, uh, formation of this, the, uh, Capital Campaign Steering Committee. And we have Jeffrey Norman from the McCallum Theater, and Ed McBride, who you know. Uh, we have, um, uh, Joel Preston, uh, Jack Fitzsimmons, uh, from Rotary, and, uh, Michael, Michael Collin. Uh, Michael, uh, having done Capital Campaign in, um, New Jersey, uh, and Joel having done several of them, and of course, Jack, uh, doing lots of fundraising locally. Uh, I went to a couple of the steering, uh, steering committee meetings, uh, for this capital campaign. There are no reservations about our ability to, um, uh, meet, uh, people and get to the right people, uh, in terms of solicitation for substantial donations. And so, that condition, or that concern, was off the board. And then we looked at, uh, how much progress we made, uh, with the, with the, uh, foundation and the committees with Peter, uh, since February, when we brought him on, on an interim basis. And that progress has been substantial, and you can see from the reports he gives, um, and the most recent one just a few minutes ago. Uh, he's on top of everything, uh, and the other side of the coin is if you brought someone else in, um, the learning curve, we thought would disrupt our momentum. I do believe we have substantial momentum right now as an organization, and our, our ability to, um, fundraise and achieve our goals and, and realize our mission is substantially higher, uh, by, uh, having Peter with us. Um, the agreement is, uh, one year, and then an option for the second year. Um, that's based on mutual agreement, uh, in terms of the timing. So, uh, I just wanted to share that decision with you, and, um, hopefully you're also positive about, uh, that exec, that person as our executive director. And we, we, um, appreciate the teamwork and, um, uh, teaming up with, with, with the trustees. It's been, it's been great the last two, three years. And, uh, we, we look forward to a lot of progress in the next year or two. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Questions from trustees? Yes, just, were there any objections at all? Bill, were there any objections?
No, this was a unanimous, the executive committee, uh, was unanimous on this. And, uh, we're gonna ratify that decision, uh, at our meeting. Um, I expect that, um, that will also be unanimous.
Well, I mean, to my.
Uh, that, maybe that, Betsy, Betsy's been on a couple of these committees. Um, if you wanna weigh in, Betsy, I mean, people are really responding to his, his sense of organization. He sits on all the committees, he organizes all the committees, he does the minutes. Everybody's energized, um, and, uh, I don't know, it would be very difficult to replace him in that capacity. Betsy, what do you think?
I agree, a hundred percent.
I was gonna say too, since I attend those meetings, I've always been very impressed with Peter, so I think it was a good choice as well. Not that my vote counts, but.
Any other questions? Uh, Bill, I have two questions. Uh, is he gonna be coming out here at all during this one year that you have a contract with him?
Yes, um, the good news is that we had set aside some, uh, funds in our budget for, um, an executive search firm, in case we needed to use that, so we're gonna reapply those to some travel budget, and he's set to come in, uh, in September. Uh, and then we think, we're, we want him to come in, uh, again, uh, after the first of the year. If, if, um, we need more frequency, um, great, uh, and I think when he comes in in September will be great for, um, maybe we can set up, um, a meeting. Uh, I don't know if he could be here at the trustees' meeting at the same time as the meetings that, uh, we have and the events that we have, but what, we have to work on that, and, um, we will.
The, um, Peter said he will be here September 9th through the 13th, but your board meeting's September 4th. So, if you, if you did wanna have him in person, or do some, if, what, you could, you could set up a separate, you know, just a meet and greet or something, if you wanted to.
That'd be nice.
Not, not an official meet, a meeting.
Not a meeting, just a meeting.
Yeah.
Bill, what percent of a contract does he work in?
Pardon me?
What percent of a contract does he work in? Is that a hundred percent, fifty percent, seventy-five percent?
Oh, I see what you mean. Yeah, he's, uh, we're really extending the, uh, part-time, uh, extension, um, of the, the twenty hours. Um, he's working more than twenty hours, but nominally, uh, in writing, it's twenty hours.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's the, it's the same, it's the same as the, um, uh, proposal for the, um, grant that you gave us. So, all the particulars of the grant are, uh, in, in force, and it's, it's, um, it's the same, it's a, it's a half-time person.
Great. All right, thank you, Bill, appreciate it. No other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, um, you have a floor?
Oh, I have, I'm just here to observe.
Oh, okay. All right, Bill threw you underneath the bus.
Yeah. You know, I, I will say this, I did want, um, it was very effective when, um, David Sidley and I were at the meetings, and I wanted our newer members of the executive team to, to come and meet you and, and observe a meeting or two, and for you to get to know them, and that's why Betsy's here.
Great, thank you, you're welcome.
Thanks.
Hey, any other questions on the side of that? Okay, our library staff.
Oh, yes, uh, yeah, David Sidley, um, wanted to make sure you guys know, he's just on as an observer. Yeah, and me, I'm on?
You're on.
Okay, hi, welcome to the library. Uh, I, um, I guess we'll get to it, I realize there's a mistake on the agenda. Because it says appointment of trustee, of treasurer, but it's election. We messed up the word again. So, we'll get to that seven B, it should say election of, because, um, yeah, we realized.
Where are you reading?
I'll get, I'll get to it, seven B.
Seven B.
It says appointment of, and it's actually election of. Okay, so back to.
Oh, I see.
Back to library. Uh, summer reading program continues, um, now through July 20th. Um, so if you haven't signed up, you, there's still chances to, to win grand prizes. We have some really amazing prizes, including a hundred dollar Amazon gift card, eight bikes from Sustainability Commission, an electric scooter, um, a Nintendo Switch, and a PlayStation, why do I sound so old? And, uh, so, among other prizes. Uh, but as trustees too, I wanna invite you to participate in our grand finale celebration. That's, um, July 24th at ten thirty a.m., and you are invited to attend, and if you want to, you can help us give out the draw for the prizes and stuff. Um, it is a lot of fun. Anybody been to one before? No. But, a lot of kids come in, they all wanna win, and it's so exciting.
What time did you say?
Ten thirty in the morning. Yeah, before, hopefully before it gets too hot. Um, the, uh, the greatest time is when the kid, if a kid wins, and they're actually here to take their prize with them. Uh, last year, we gave away the little, um, uh, drivable Jeep. And they challenged the weight limit on that, see how many kids could pile in, right? The kids are piled in that thing, driving it away here. And so, we were very excited that the winner of the Jeep was here to drive it out the door. But it's fun when the kids can take their bikes right out the door. It's a lot of fun. Um, uh, the, tomorrow night, uh, is library night at the Palm Springs Power baseball game, in case you just love to get out in heat. Uh, I will be throwing out the first pitch, uh, before the game starts. The game starts at seven, but, um, the first pitch, I think, happens just a few minutes before then. They do the National Anthem and the first pitch, and then if you show your library card, you get in free. So, um, it's so much fun. They do have misters. They have a cooling system that's on the shady side. The sun does go down about seven forty-five. Well, over here, maybe earlier, probably around about seven. Um, so, if you want to, you're welcome to come. I will not blame you if you don't. Because it is hot.
Practicing?
No, I need to, but I'm just, I'm.
A little late.
I know. I, I thrown it out before, and it was a dirt ball, but, you know, whatever.
You're representing us.
I'll do my best. I don't, I donated my ball from the last one, I moved. Okay, um, the next time the architects will be at city council is, uh, Thursday, July 25th. So, they will be presenting the next stage of whatever they're working on right now. We're still in design development, so we're still working on the details, placements of doors, and think, things like that, the size of the door openings for different areas, so. Um, also, the next Library Renovation Steering Committee is going to meet on Wednesday, July 24th, at five thirty, and that will be here, so you'll be there?
Yeah.
Okay, and David? Okay, great. Um, so, we'll have representatives from the community and different organizations there at the steering committee, and then the next night will be city council. Um, so, the presentation at city council will happen at the beginning of the meeting. Um, it's not an official agenda item, so, um, if you want to give comments, you can, you can write in, or, um, I think you have to wait until the public comment time, which is around nine o'clock at night. So, just, uh, FYI about that, there is, you can do public comment if you wanna submit anything to council, um, via email, or, um, just email, or filling out an online form. And then that's enough. Um, so, thank you to Juanita Garner for presenting at the Joint City Council Library Boards, Boards and Commissions, uh, meeting on, um, June 17th. It was really great to have you there, and, uh, I don't know if any of you were able to watch, did they, did they put? Yeah, um, but she did a great job, uh, representing you all, and, um, it was just a nice night to, to meet other commissioners and, and be together. I don't know if you have anything you wanted to add about?
It was just, thank you for that opportunity. It was wonderful to be able to stand up there and, and show my enthusiasm for this wonderful renovation, but, um, it was really nice. And I sent a suggestion to city council. I think that we should have our presentations first, and then have an opportunity to kind of talk to other people, because I had some questions about the other commissions, but then.
Yeah. Maybe do the dinner.
Do the dinner.
Maybe, but then we're starving.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, so that was, uh, a nice opportunity to get together and as, as a way to thank the boards and commissions, uh, with the dinner. Um, the city council is working to schedule a joint city council Agua Caliente Band of Uyghur Indians meeting, um, tentatively on July 18th at five o'clock at the convention center. So, they do that pretty regularly. I know.
I'm gonna have to turn this thing off, I'm sorry, hang on. I'll be going, that's on side.
Okay, well, so just FYI on that one. Um, library outreach, we've been doing some, um, some fun outreach. Our children, children's librarian and our teen librarian have been doing, uh, outreach this summer. They do it all year long, but they've been working with, um, James O. Jesse Desert Highland Unity Center and the Boys and Girls Club to take our summer reading program on the road. So, we've been taking the program to them, um, taking crafts up there, uh, books, um, all the little giveaways and things that we, that we've been doing. So, um, it's a great way, because it's difficult for the, um, James O. Jesse staff to bring the kids down here, because they're, they're a kid, you know, transportation, and they can't bring everybody, so it's, it's great, um, for us to go up there and work with them. And then even just today, our teen librarian went over to the Boys and Girls Club, even though it's right there. Sometimes it's hard for them to get away, due to staffing, so, we took it on the road. One moment. Okay, um, next month, uh, Tuesday, August 6th, at seven a.m., I will be presenting to the Sunup Rotary at the Mycel Center, so, um, I do present to service org, organizations. So, if you have a service organization that, uh, you'd like me to go make a presentation to, I'm happy to do it. Tell them about what's going on at the library, what, where we are in the renovation, all those things. Tell them about some fun services that we have that they might not know about. So, we did that, and then another outreach, uh, event that we did was this last Sunday. Um, Jeannie and the Cartthrobs performed, and we danced our hearts out at the One P.S. Lip Sync Battle. And Juanita was a, a dead mother helper at the event, um, so we were representing the Palm Springs Public Library. We danced to Footloose. And, um, it's sad to say, we did not win, but, uh, we won over the hearts of the audience. No, we did, I mean, we, they were cheering, it was so fun.
You guys were amazing.
Well, thank you.
It was so, I, this is such a great job. You should tell them a little bit about.
Oh, it was so cute. The competition was so stiff. I mean, there were so many great acts. I mean, it's, you had, they had to pick winners, and um, so, our act, we did Footloose, and I started out, it was a library scene, Arun was a li, library shelver. He was shelving books, and Stephanie was shelving books, and I was at the reference desk, and the phone rings, and, and the people asked, asked some really stupid questions, and, uh, and then I start singing Footloose, uh, and then, um, then we have a wardrobe change, and then we're suddenly at prom, nineteen eighty-four. And we're all wearing, Lisa, Lisa was in a, in a gown, and we had all these different colored prom, prom dresses. Arun had his bow tie and suspenders, and, uh, so then we had our dream sequence of, now we're at prom, dancing it out, but suddenly we have book carts. So, so we did a big dance, and it was a lot of fun, and I got a lot, got some laughs and chuckles, and the reference question that caught, well, there were two, but one, I'll tell you the first one. The first one was, um, uh, I said, no, we can't reschedule the solar eclipse program. That was a real question, when we had a solar eclipse here in, uh, twenty seventeen. Like, four thousand people shut up, but somebody called and said, oh, my daughter's in school during that time, can you reschedule the program? Really, it's a real question, so we had to use that one. So my team members were Lisa Brock, Michelle Magana Nunez, Stephanie Lang, Arun Mayani, Nancy Valdivia, and Lea Rodriguez. And decor was done by uh, Yuri Navarro, and we had lights, we had glitter. Um, we had a, we had a set, we had fake shelves, we had a set change. So that one side was, uh, looked like the library, and then we turned the boards around and then it was prom. Um, and it was a great way to promote the library, so um, it's definitely outreach. And it was sold out. The show was sold out.
I sense a new fundraising strategy here.
Dance our hearts out. Um, and then uh, the day before that, uh, our library had a flood. So uh, our administration offices, there is a restroom back there and the toilet, the water line broke. But nobody works in admin on Saturdays, so nobody noticed until all floor, four of the offices were completely drenched. And the water was coming out the door, and the library customer says, you know, there's water coming out from under that door. So is that why the yellow tape's up there? Yes, it flooded out into the main room. It went out here uh, under the the plans cabinet. It went under her cabinets that are built in, which are probably gonna end up getting ripped out. Went into the kids' room, the kids' bathroom, like everywhere. So the toilet's ready to renovate. We're not quite ready, but um, it's, yeah, what a mess. So we're in temporary uh, locations. We're just camping out in different storage rooms and it's a disaster. I mean, it, it could have been really bad, but um, you know, luckily, we've got good crews coming in to clean us up and dry us out. Oh, what are you gonna do? So uh, and um, good news, we are hiring. We are hiring library assistants to work at the circulation desk at the front, so it's officially posted on the city's uh, human resources page, so we have uh, currently two positions. We're gonna have a third position. So the jobs are posted right now. They just went live and they're gonna be um, open until July twenty-third at four P M. So go to the city of Palm Springs website if you to tell people about our jobs, so we uh, we don't have job openings here very often. Uh, we have very, we have one of the lowest turnovers in the whole city, this department, so people like to work at the library. And um, so we're very happy to have these job openings and um, excited to get the word out and get some really great applicants who love libraries, and we're not your, your grandparents' library. It's not quiet here. Not a lot of reading books, but um, sorry, my report is very long, but that was my report, and we're off on August, so. Yeah.
Any questions for Jeannie?
Back to the, the waterfall. Wa- was there any serious damage sustained with books or uh, files or?
Also, yeah, we're very lucky. I was telling you before the meeting started that um, if you, if you look at our floors, they said that the drywall was not affected, because if you look at our walls, there's a rubber baseboard trim. There's no drywall, drywall below that. It's all just um, like steel beams. Not there. Um, so no drywall was damaged, but poor Lisa has built-in cabinets. Uh, and they said they're soaking wet underneath, so they're gonna have to come out, because they won't be able to get them dry in time. So uh, but books are up off the floor. Um, we lost a few little things that were on the floor, but we don't keep too much stuff on the floor just for this reason. Because um, yeah, don't store things on the floor, because they will be ruined. Trying to think what, I don't know, anything bad, nothing, nothing real major. We had used to just a couple, yeah, some things got, my emergency kit was on the floor and it got wet, but you know, it was all pretty protected stuff, so. No, we're very lucky about the books. Everything's okay on that. The carpet's gross. It smells horrible. The furnitures, yeah, we're lucky we're getting a renovation, because all the furniture at the bottom is all like soaked up the water. All our desks.
Any other questions for Jeannie? Okay, let's go to Roman numeral six, Treasures Report.
Well, there's not much to report. I mean, you have it in there. The, the chambers again, very minor. From the last report, there really isn't.
That's great. That's good news, right?
Yes, it is good. It's on page, well. I don't know what page it counts. It says nine on the bottom, but it also says one, but in any event, this is the summary page of the old report to the foundation. Not really much of a change at all.
Given donations for quite a while.
No, we'd be happy to take some donations. But we can also, you know, direct your donations to the, the Library Foundation or the Friends. But yeah, we um, we don't get too many donations in the trust fund. It's just um, the foundation exists now for that and the Friends. Yeah, every now and then we'll get, we'll get a big request or someone leaves it in their estate, but.
Okay, any questions for Al, for the Treasures Report? Okay, there are none. I need a motion. Accept.
Accept as presented.
And first, I'm saying, thank you, first and the second. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Alright, thank you, Al. Let's move on to Roman numeral seven, discussion, action item seven A is election of the library board of trustees, chairperson, vice chairperson, and.
I completely made a mistake. Yes, ignore, yes, seven B is a mistake. I meant to erase it and got busy and, yes.
So are you moving that then to the last page?
Seven A.
Seven B is.
Right.
So that's, if everything's okay, we'll just leave it at seven B.
I thought I fixed it, but then I forgot to erase the old.
Okay.
But we still have the script. We have the phone.
Yes.
The script is the last page.
Well, let me tell you if I may, David, we spent hours.
I've got your emails. Was that the right email?
That wasn't.
That's okay. I mean, he didn't get mine, and I have no idea what, but I have proof that he sent it. Maybe the phone is just the way to go. So it was not easy to uh, do that.
That's true, but we, but we did come to an agreement. So what we wanted to do, so nominations are now in order for the office.
Okay, nominations are now in order for the office of chair. Uh, are there any, are there any nominations?
I think we would like to nominate Craig Flora.
Yes, we would.
Okay, what do I do in this?
You just keep going, yeah.
I will not be able to fill the term.
Why?
Well, you can, you can tell them if you.
Okay.
You cannot deliver them.
I will not be able to fill a year's term. We are moving. After thirty-eight years in Palm Springs. We are moving east to Rancho Mirage.
Honestly, I don't know, and I need to ask on this question. To be a trustee, are you required to be a resident of Palm Springs?
Did you get an answer from the clerk?
Oh, I called her. We discussed it. She did not give me an answer.
You still own your property in Palm Springs?
Yes.
Okay, that should be good enough.
And if at some point we, we're gonna have to get some room in on that. I mean, David simply lives in Rancho Mirage, but he's on the foundation.
Well, foundation doesn't matter.
Okay, so this way, if uh, if you wanna nominate me and you wanna have me do it, I'll do it until I can no longer do it. And then the vice president will take hold.
That's true.
Good with that?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, so uh, are there any further nominations for the office of chair? It says pause here, but you can see, okay, I've seen none. Appears to be no further nominations for that particular office. Seeing none without objection, the nominations are closed. Okay, right? Now do I go right to vice chair?
Yeah, and I didn't even put treasurer, but it's still, you do, do the right vice chair.
Does he have to declare that they're elected by unanimous consent?
Maybe it's when you get it, when you do them all at the same time. You do that. Uh, nominations are closed and then.
I could come back and do one.
We should be able to do all of this by affirmation, but the city won't let us do it.
Okay, so are there any nominations for vice chair?
They say let's just do the nominations for each one and then just you declare it. That would be. If she will accept.
Yes, I'm not moving east.
Okay, uh, are there any further nominations? Uh, seeing them, that objection nominations are closed. Okay, now the next one is for, are there nominations for treasure?
Yes, there are. One. Al Jones, oh my god.
Okay, are there any further nominations for treasure? Okay, hearing that there's none, seeing there are no objections, nominations are closed. Okay, now I, can we just say for all three positions?
I say yes.
Okay, can I have a motion for all three positions? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, really.
All in favor? Okay, great.
Thank you, David.
Congratulations.
We'll be on the nominating committee any day of the week.
David's going back on, nominations committed.
Oh, you're kicking his arm.
No, 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 David. He, he wants to be back. He, he mailed me.
Oh, you are discussing the committee.
We didn't have three on the nominating.
So seven B is void, because it was a mistake, so we should.
I have C, trustees consideration, a volunteer for committee assignments. And the committees are listed at the bottom of the page.
Yeah. Exactly.
Okay, so um.
Is that where we are?
Yeah.
Well, we're at C, but if there's anybody that wants to be on a different committee or wanted to still go off in the committee?
I, I'd still like to continue to be on those committees, including liaison with the foundation.
Okay.
I enjoy that.
I do, but you know, I work full-time, and it seems like every time there's a Friends meeting, I have another meeting, so I don't wanna. I'm not. No, she's on both. Oh, I'm on both. Oh, I didn't know that. I thought it was just on the Friends. I know, that's the problem I had. So I have to be an occasional drop-in. I was doing fine for a while, and then also the um, the Zoom link never worked for me. Oh, the friend, the friends at the library said, we didn't really want that option. Oh, well, that takes care of that. We don't even turn it on.
Have Zoom?
Yes.
Uh, yes, they do have.
Oh, see, I never have that one.
Have, they're gonna have it too, because Bill is gonna be in Chicago, so.
I would like to be on the foundation and not on the Friends.
Okay, uh, if you can make that change.
Okay.
They meet the second Tuesday at two o'clock. And then the foundation meets the second Thursday at three. That's better for me.
Yeah, that would be possible for me, but no.
Yeah.
Okay, and um, Al and Juanita, you're both on the budget. Both wanna stay on.
We seem to be a good team on that.
Policies and bylaws, Juanita, you still good with that? Foundation liaison, you're both on, and it'll be Zoomed, and so you're somewhat covered.
Yeah, because I can make some of them. I mean, two o'clock on Tuesday. Oh, and they only meet six times a year. Right, so they've only. Oh, that's good. They have one meeting this week and then it's, so it's every other month.
I've never missed one.
So there is a meeting this week?
I've never missed.
Okay, good. And where is it? Uh, it'll be in this room. Okay.
But they do have Zoom too.
Yeah, but I can make this one.
Okay, and Friends, uh, I'll still be their liaison. I'm also on their executive board now. That works. I can get two meetings.
As long as you live in Palm Springs.
Yeah, and they don't care either.
Go to Ranch and Mirage. That was so anticlimactic.
So I set it up pretty. Okay, and Al, you'll stay with Major Jay?
Yes.
So anybody that wants to be on the committee and then not miss out on the committee?
There, there's just one change then, and that's Deborah with Friends.
Somebody will connect her with the foundation.
I mean, I know, efficiency always.
All right. I don't know if we need to make a motion about doing.
Um, I think it's uh, a consultant member. I think you all just volunteer for your committees.
Yeah.
I don't think you need a motion.
Okay, so we're good. Okay, so let's move to Roman numeral seven D, which is uh, library renovation updates.
Well, I kinda gave uh, gave that in my separate part and the toilet. How could I forget? The toilet started without us.
Uh, but that's not a renovation.
But, but they're making their presentation next week, is that correct?
The twenty-fifth, the twenty-second, we've got a couple weeks. I have a meeting with the architects tomorrow. We, we meet every three weeks online and discuss things and do updates, but.
Are we basically on track on scheduling?
Yeah, we're still on schedule. Um, I know they said that they were going to um, finish the design development early August, and then we'll go into construction documents. So that's very.
And what do we need the city council to do?
So when they um, when they get ready to go, right now, nothing. The, the city, we just wanna make sure that the city council isn't surprised by anything that's going on.
Is there any decision-making that they will?
Not at this July meeting. It's just. Um, the July meeting is just a staffs update, and then uh, we don't have anything scheduled later, but um, what will come down the road will be approved. I don't know if they, I don't think they have to approve it going to bid. I'm not sure. Uh, because that's not my department, but they'll either uh, uh, approve the bid or approve the, the awarding of the bid. And so it will go out to bid for a contractor. And then at that time, they'll approve the bid and approve the financing. So once it goes live for bidding, the finance department will work on the documents. And then once they get the bids, they'll fill in the number. Um, because they can prepare all of the loan, it's like a loan. Like do a mortgage. You fill out all the documents, and then once you find that out what the number is, that people have bid for this project, then that's what we'll borrow, minus anything that we've earned as grants or gifts or what, whatnot. Maybe in the fall, maybe early winter. I'm not sure how long it's gonna take, but we're, we're getting close. We're getting close.
Pretty exciting.
Yes.
Any other update you wanna give us? Okay, any committee reports, yes?
Oh, just one question about the renovation. Meeting on the twenty-fourth. My, my experience of the last one was that we kinda ran out of time for people to feel like they had their questions.
Yes.
Answered. Has, has that been discussed?
I asked them to get, I, I said, I told them we need uh, an extra thirty minutes.
Okay.
So I think it should go from five thirty to seven thirty, because they were trying to rush it to seven, but it's really unrealistic to have with, and the group has grown so large. Just to have everybody say their names takes thirty minutes.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Just seemed very rushed.
Yeah, so I did tell them, and I'll mention it again at the meeting I have tomorrow. Uh, because I mean, I feel like it should take as long as it needs to take. So that everybody has uh, time to, to give their feedback or ask questions, because there's, there's not too much. It's almost like a run-through. I think that's what it is, really, a run-through for council that, that you guys see at first and alert to any, any issues or concerns.
It seems to me it's important that it doesn't feel like that there, because it also builds buy-in, it all, you know?
Yeah. So, yeah, it's. So, yeah, it's, it's tough to get it all in at once, but uh yeah, it's important and uh. I love to, I love those meetings because I'd love to see the new stuff and and love to hear the reactions and see, see how everybody. How everybody feels about it too. So what they do, I I feel like they they, the steering committees, they uh they meet, they show you what. What work has been done since the last time, so they come in for these periodic checkups and so it's the time for them to present back. What they took from the last, whatever they've been working on, here's the newest stuff. And then they take your feedback, go work on the next time that they're going to present, so it's kind of a. You don't get an immediate uh reaction on the steering committee information, it's gonna come. A few months.
Any other comments? Okay, um any other comments from staff regarding future agenda items or from the trustees for future agenda items?
Just a reminder that we're dark in August, so we will not have a meeting. Our next meeting is Wednesday, September fourth.
And then we'll be able to share information regarding your meeting on the twentieth, July twenty.
Yeah, twenty-fourth and twenty, yeah, yes, yes.
That would probably be one of your agenda items for that coming up.
We'll just keep discussion, library renovation on the agenda.
Okay, so any other comments for anyone? Thank you for coming and joining our. Uh our next meeting is scheduled for September fourth at five thirty, everybody be safe until.
I'm sorry, one thing, but Juanita, uh our October second meeting, we cannot meet that day.
Because?
It's Rosh Hashanah.
That's a reason.
Oh, yeah, so we'll need to reschedule our October meeting, but we can discuss that in September.
September, so we have two.
Last September fourth meeting is to be back in our usual place.
It'll be at City Hall, yes. Okay, sorry.
Thank you for your attendance, everyone.